Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphone. I usually think they put that on to remind me to silence my cellphone. There are listening devices available, and if you plan to speak during public comment, there's a sign-in sheet out there so that you don't have to say your whole address and everything. All right, so I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. I heard all kinds of motions and seconds. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to the second page of my agenda already. So, regular business. First item is to authorize the state's attorney to apply for the South Dakota Department of Public Safety's STOP- P grant. Good morning, Amy.
Madam Chair, I know Mr. Hager, state's attorney, was planning to be here to present this item. Is it possible to pass it for a brief time?
Oh, absolutely. We can, we'll just take it, should we take it all the way to the bottom and just wait? Or just look for him when he walks in and try to?
For him, if you don't mind.
Okay.
But I'm happy to address it. I just know he was planning to be here, so I don't want to step into his role.
Okay, we'll give him a few minutes. I will move on to item 11. Consider a motion, submission of a letter of concern to the PUC regarding Heartland-Greenway Navigator Pipeline. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler, Commission Office. On the February 21st meeting, we looked at a, or the commission looked at a letter to be drafted and sent to the Public Utilities Commission concerning the Navigator Pipeline, similar, pretty, almost identical to the Navigator, to the letter that was sent regarding the Summit Pipeline. At that meeting, it was discussed that we would like to see some revisions to that letter. The one in your packet has been revised. In my summary, it's a little bit more specific in terms of what the expectations are of these, of Navigator in terms of emergency management response and training, along with more specific in terms of what their plans are should the pipeline cease operation. If you have to do, try to answer any questions, you might have to.
Any questions for Tyler? All right, if not, is there a public comment? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this matter today? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Gary. I have read the letter many times, and as I have repeatedly mentioned, this letter in no way represents the landowners and has little to no bearing on the PUC's decision. I am asking you to vote against sending this letter for what it doesn't say. First off, it says nothing about the commissioner's strong disapproval for the use of eminent domain by a private company, unless, of course, you support that. It says nothing about using eminent domain for a product that has no value to the public. This is a waste product that is being transported to an underground storage container and being paid for by taxpayer funds with no direct benefit to the public. It says nothing about demanding a written and financial obligation for an exit.
... eminent domain and is now controlled for the next 100 years by investors that couldn't even find South Dakota on a map. Is that the legacy you want attached to your name, knowing that a grandpa now sitting in a nursing home had to pass along his inheritance that he nurtured his whole life to his kids, his grandkids, that now has foreign investors controlling this land and making millions of dollars off of it? You're going to feel good about that? Are you going to feel good about knowing that the dreams of somebody wanting to build a dream home was shattered by a corrupt corporation that you did nothing to stop? If the answer is yes, I feel sorry for you, sitting up there in your high-backed leather chairs, looking down at what appears to be the common people sitting out here, asking for some kind of help from their elected officials to protect what is supposed to be an American freedom, the right to own property without the threat of government taking away their control of that piece of homestead. Please rethink your strategy and support the people who elected you to represent them, not the billion-dollar pipeline companies that could care less about South Dakota. One last, our last comment. Do you know that Navigator is funded by BlackRock? If you don't know what BlackRock is into, you really need to do some research.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment this morning on this issue? Good morning.
Good morning. Dennis, Anderson Valley Springs. And I'd like to speak to what I feel is a concern for the Brandon Valley School District. About 20 square miles of the district, if you figure, one mile on either side of the pipeline is not going to be suitable for anything other than what it's being used for today, if this pipeline goes in. It's not going to be able to be developed for residential area or business. We've got Exit 410, Aspen Boulevard, which run between Brandon and Valley Springs. That's going to be a major impact on those highways and any future development in the Brandon Valley School District and greatly affect its future tax base.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment on this issue this morning? All right, I don't see anybody moving forward. All right, so that takes us to commission discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Kipley.
Madam Chair, I guess it was my initial concern. I know we, staff had brought to us the draft that we had sent to the PUC related to the Summit application, and so this was the corresponding application for Navigator. I took, I'll take some credit or blame where it lands for authorship, if any of my colleagues want to make any changes, but basically I wanted to update some of the language that we had put related to Summit, mostly some of our same concerns, but kind of updating it, especially as we're diving a little bit deeper into some of the emergency management planning. I know we'll also potentially be looking at this at the Planning Commission level. I know our colleagues in Lincoln County are looking at it at a Planning Commission level, but really what this is, maybe for the sake of the public understanding of where we're coming from here, this is essentially one governmental entity talking to another governmental entity with our concerns. So the PUC still has all of their authority. We still reserve all of our authority, but basically just telling our colleagues at the PUC what concerns we still have and what we plan on, still reserving all rights to proceed consistent with our powers as a county. But anyway, that's where I was coming from with drafting some tweaks to this, and I would wait for any other comments from my colleagues, but definitely support sending this letter as it stands today.
Anyone else?
First of all, just thank you to everybody who put time into working on the letter. Since it's a letter of concern and similar to the Summit Letter, I think the first impression that I got from reading it was that it's just more mild, as far as the level of concern that we have about it. So, and I did address some of the issues already regarding different points that were not included on this more recent letter, with the legislature being involved with eminent domain. I think that's one thing we took off. So, I'm not opposed to the letter, but I wondered if we could maybe make it just a little bit stronger verbiage to help represent our level of concern.
Any other comments on that?
Madam Chair, I can respond to that generally. Yes, we did, in the Summit Letter, we did have a bullet point or some reference to eminent domain. I think that's probably a big part of the journey here is, and I feel bad for constituents that I've had conversations with, landowners and whatnot, because they get caught in the middle of a lot of different jurisdictions here, and I think a lot of people, it's easy to pass the buck and say, no, that's the PUC, or no, that's the legislature, and I think it's incumbent upon an institution to be able to say what their role is and to educate the public if they want redress of grievances, essentially. What entity do they need to go to? And so much of this related to eminent domain would be the state legislature. So much related to safety is going to be the federal government, the PHMSA guidelines and whatnot. So our role is somewhat confined here, and so I think that is somewhat expressed in just the humility of the letter of, we reserve all of our rights and our role, but the PUC also has its role, and we're asking them to do their job, and we're going to do our job. So I guess that's my response. So I didn't know that, I guess it was a conscious decision to leave out a reference to eminent domain, because I don't think we have a role in it. So I think that is helpful to both the PUC and us as institutions to communicate with one another on what is actually germane to our roles. And then I would just probably respectfully disagree with my colleague that I'm comfortable with the tone and tenor of this letter. If we'd like any proposed amendments, I'm open to those, but I would probably be prepared to make a motion to authorize this letter as it stands.
So I'll take a motion, and then if there's a second, we can have more discussion. Excuse me.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Commissioner?
I would just support what Mr. Kipley has said. I think that one of the things that we're jumping to conclusions on are some of the things that the county has a responsibility for. Secondly, is the PUC is the one who regulates the permitting of the process, and if we start the clock now on regulations that we might support, that the Planning and Building Committee would bring forward to us, we're losing that time when they finally do make a decision, and I think the next meeting is in September, if I remember right. And they have been hearing from all of the forms of government, and I think there's a timeframe for doing that with setbacks and all of the things that we can do based on the federal government's regulations. So I think the possibility of addressing more of these concerns is a good thing, but I also think that we have to do this one step at a time.
Other comments? Commissioner Karski.
Sure. Pipelines, doesn't matter what they're carrying, they're always going to cause controversy. It's just the nature of the beast. And we've heard that over half the people that the pipelines land would cross have already signed easements. I mean, they're not giving up property, they're giving up the right to go under their property with the pipeline. They still own all the surface rights and everything that goes with the rest of their property. Eminent domain, that's not controlled by us, period. Just so many different issues with this pipeline that we could do setbacks, we could say, well, you have to set back everything a half a mile from any school, resident, or whatever, and then the PUC says, that's unreasonable. 100 feet is reasonable. We can make up rules, and it's so much of it's out of our control and jurisdiction, very little, regardless of what people say, is out of our control and our jurisdiction. Eminent domain is one of the big ones. We are going to take the side of public safety, making sure that we can control what we can control. We get, this keeps getting put back in our lap as if it's our ability to control, and it isn't, period.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Why don't we go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Kipley.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Leinberg?
No.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. All right, we'll circle back to item 10. State's attorney's here. Good morning.
Good morning. I apologize for being late. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about potential grant funding for a victim witness assistant. There are some U.S. Department of Justice funds where they pass through the state, where they are looking for ways to come combat intimate partner violence, or what we commonly call domestic violence. Looking at those funds from the state, there have been other counties in South Dakota that have used that effectively. Minnehaha County is hoping to use this in conjunction with some others, but certainly this can provide a really good start for combating that domestic violence. It is a problem in our community. Certainly, domestic violence, when you look at the very root of it, it's violence that's happening with someone that you have very intimate relationships with. It's a very hard thing to prosecute, it's a very hard thing to deal with if you are a victim. These funds that we are seeking, ultimately, a victim witness assistant costs approximately $86,000. There would be funding for that with the 25% match, so with this application, I think that Amy has given a brief presentation on this previous to this date, but we are asking for permission to apply. The match that would come with that is a little over $21,000. Having that victim witness assistant in our office, we would really be trying to target those, you know, 3,200 most severe cases with intimate partner violence in Minnehaha County, just trying to make sure that we are giving those victims special attention, trying to get better results in court and improve our prosecution rate on those cases. They're difficult. A lot of times, they're felonies, whether that's aggravated assault through strangulation, whatever that turns out to be. Those initial 15 days where we're having contact with that individual and trying to shepherd them through the legal process and also a very hard time in their life, that would be what I would hope to use this position for. I think it's a good thing for Minnehaha County and the victims in Minnehaha County. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the state's attorney?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kipley.
I am supportive of this, and I appreciate you getting creative to look for funding sources, but we do have a matching obligation, so that's 25%. But I think I saw in here that this is renewable, in the sense of we're not left holding the back, that we get one year of, they cover 75%, and then we're left covering it there. Therefore, the plan would be to, if we get it, to keep reapplying or renewing, so we would always get 75% from the state, and we'd just be still responsible for the 25%.
Correct. That would be my intention. Other counties that have used similar funding have had it renewed, not 100% accurate, but I think it's been close to 10 years. So I don't think it's something where they say, okay, for one year, you do this match, and then you're left with everything. It would be my intention to try and get this funding year after year, if it's being successful. If it's not, we would reevaluate it a year.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the state's attorney?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Leinberg.
I was just curious, when we would be updated on the measure of success with the position? Like, is that something that you can report to us on? I'm in favor also, but I just wanted to know.
I will give you information as soon as I can have it. Certainly with those, I would probably want at least a year out, but I would anticipate this time next year, hopefully being able to talk in my report to the commission about the success of these efforts.
I look forward to that. That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, be open to discussion or a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the master agency renewal product and services schedule between Alcohol Monitoring Services and the Sheriff's Office for the SCRAM electronic monitoring program. That's a mouthful. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. As you said, I'm requesting authorization to approve and the chair to sign this contract. It's a renewal contract with SCRAM. The terms are exactly the same, they have not changed, other than the term of the period.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the warden? Anybody for public comment on this item?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Warden, you're up here for a little while. So, item 13 is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Accurate Controls Inc. Service Agreement for the Jail Automation Systems.
So, Accurate Controls is our company that we use for our security electronics in the jail. This is another renewal contract. I've locked in price for three years, so when you see on the contract, it says $121,000, it is not $121,000 upfront. For budgetary purposes, it's $40,600 and change for this year and the next two years after that. Doing the three-year contract, Lux is sent at a lower price and keeps that same price through those three years, so.
Questions for the warden? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, wait, public comment? Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? All right. Now I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Right, that takes us to your last item, which is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the 340B contract pharmacy services agreement between Minnehaha County Jail and Diamond Drugs.
Thank you. So, we currently contract with Diamond Pharmacy for all the pharmaceuticals for the inmates in the jail. This contract is specifically for 340B medications. Kind of a long story, but we're partnering with the South Dakota Department of Health to try to do our part in combating sexually transmitted diseases in our community. They authorize us as a subrecipient of their 340B grant, so we are now a covered entity, and we are afforded 340B pricing on medications. This is just one piece of the puzzle. I will be back in front of you with other MOUs and other contracts in the future regarding this, but the biggest hurdle was getting approved by HERSA to be a covered entity, and this really does have some potential for significant budgetary savings when it comes to pharmaceuticals for the jail.
Questions for the warden? Commissioner Kipley.
Madam Chair, so with some healthcare administration background, I know how important 340B status can be, especially to healthcare operations that are heavy on pharmaceuticals. I'm thinking more in the realm of, like, oncology practices, like chemotherapies, like, basically very expensive medications. So I think, I think we're on the same wavelength here, that this is all a very positive thing. We'll see how much value really comes out in our situation. I'm waiting for, what's the catch type of a thing? Are we really going to qualify? I just don't know. I mean, a jail is just not a traditional healthcare operation that I'm thinking of, that like a Sanford or Avera and their 340B status. A lot of it comes from a support for rural healthcare and high Medicaid population healthcare is where some of the intent of the 340B is coming from. I would think, I looked into the federal regulations that, the definition of a patient. So I'll be looking for support from our state's attorney's office. How can we make sure we fit that definition as much as we can for the medications and for the individual patients? But it sounds like it's going to be an ongoing conversation, and we'll be staying in touch on this issue with further MOUs, just trying to take advantages as much as we can and establish. I think that was the other conversation I had with you offline, was trying to set some baselines within our budgeting. What are we paying for now, and is this really making an impact? I think it's only got upside, though, so definitely supportive of all of this on the 340B front. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the warden on this? Public comment? Is there anyone for public comment on this? I'd be amazed if anybody besides somebody who'd worked in healthcare had any idea what it was. I had to spend quite a bit of time on the phone with the warden to understand exactly what it was.
I'm learning as I go as well.
All right, so that takes us to further commission discussion, or I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 15, to authorize the Highway Department to purchase a 2023 Ram 250 under the State of South Dakota procurement contract 17620. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. As you're aware, a month ago, our operations manager was in a very serious accident, which totaled his county vehicle, and we were able to track down a three-quarter ton Ram pickup that will help him assist his road cruise, and Billy and Chrysler happen to have the one we're looking for on the lot, and they're matching the contract price. So we're looking for your approval to proceed with a replacement vehicle. The Colorado was totaled, we do have an insurance claim, and it's already been held away.
Any questions for Steve? Any public comment on this item? All right, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 16, which is the Information Technology Annual Briefing. Good morning, Monty.
Good morning, commissioners. Montu Wadembak, Minnehaha County IT. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to come and give you this yearly IT briefing. I'll start off by just saying, you know, as you know, Minnehaha County IT is a centralized IT department for all county departments. The next bullet item I have here is kind of our mission statement, and my version of that is, in Minnehaha County IT, one of our core competencies is managing that core infrastructure, switches, routing, storage, firewalls, and with that base foundation of reliability and security, we partner with departments on the applications that they need to run their business. They're experts in their business, so we work with them and rely on them and partner with them to help develop or purchase those applications. So with that, I want to touch on a few projects that we've completed here recently. So in 2022, we refreshed our storage. Our storage here is critical for our operation. Anything that we store electronically is stored on a very redundant storage solution that we replaced here in 2022. We also refreshed our servers in 2022. We have had some challenges with getting equipment in a timely fashion. Anyways, replaced all of that core infrastructure in 2022. The projects went very smooth with very minimal downtime, only after-hours scheduled downtime, so everything went very well. We also got some grant funding to refresh our Wi-Fi. Our Wi-Fi technology here was, give or take, 10 years old. We have about 60 wireless access points that you're using with your iPads here today, and so we refreshed all of those. We still do have a few left to replace. We're still waiting for some of the external ones that go outside for the law enforcement center. But overall, went very well, and very little cost to the county, as we mostly used grant funding for that. As you may know, the state's attorney's office migrated to PBK. The IT department's role in that was very specific, related to data migration. Most of those services were performed by PBK, but we got them all of the data for that migration, which included about 1.8 million documents, plus all the database data that goes along with that. So a lot of data that we migrated. We additionally worked to create an interface so that documents can very seamlessly flow over to the public defender's office. We're hoping that sometime today, they will be at that phase where they'll be able to electronically move documents over to the public defender's office. Okay, then some current projects. We met with the auditor's office about a Tyler Munis upgrade. This is just a normal lifecycle upgrade, and so not necessarily a major project, but will require a fair amount of hours by core users, such as the auditor's office, to run through a parallel payroll, to make sure that there's no gotchas. So we have a test environment that we will set that up in and let them go through all of their main processes. of their main processes. And so, we had that initial conversation with them yesterday. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll put that new version in place and start beginning the testing phase. We're also working with Highway on a couple of different Tyler products. One of them is called Time and Attendance, or their time entry application, as well as another solution that we're starting to implement called Enterprise Asset Management. Those two solutions will let their highway workers enter their time and associate them with projects or assets. So, when they're working on a road segment, they can allocate those costs to that asset. So, that allows them to collect the data and information that they need for their cost accounting purposes that have up to this point been done through an older legacy AS400 application. So, they've, in the past couple of years, kind of had to deal with those older applications because they needed that functionality, and up to this point, they really haven't had that with the Munis modules we've had. Another current project that we just kicked off is replacing our firewalls. So, you know, we're always looking for ways to increase our security here, and this is just a normal lifecycle replacement, but a very critical and important one that we will be working through in the next month or two. Some future opportunities, so kind of a kudos to Amanda from Register of Deeds for coming into her office and just evaluating how they're doing things as compared to how their counties are doing things. Again, they're the expert in their business, not us. So, they came in, or she came in, and just is reevaluating that, challenging how they're doing things and how they could do things differently. So, one product that they've looked at is called Document Pro from Tyler Technologies. So, we're evaluating that product along with other options that they may have, but I think there's some opportunities for them to improve their processes and just reduce the number of times they're touching a document that they're recording. So, we'll work with them on that. And then, as you may know, Tyler Incode is the county's property tax software. When we implemented that back in 2018, we knew it was a little bit older software. We knew Incode 10 was coming. And at that time, that was really the only purchasable property tax software that was designed for the state of South Dakota. We purchased that knowing that we would have this step coming up. So, I hope it's something that we can implement in 2024. So, that will probably be something that will be in my budget request. Typically, a software upgrade like this would be included with your yearly maintenance, but this is a pretty big upgrade, and for whatever reason, there's professional services involved to migrate the database, some training, because it is such a huge, huge change. But from what I've seen of that application is a lot more user-friendly and intuitive, and I think it's the right path. It's really the only path that we have and the path that makes sense. We also are evaluating migrating to Office 365. So, up to this point, the county has purchased various versions of Office. We typically try to leapfrog versions of Office to save money. So, for example, we went from Office 2013, we skipped Office 2016, and we went to Office 2019. There's not that much difference in those products, and we're just doing those leapfrogs really just to save money. Microsoft is really trying to get as many people as possible into Office 365. Various reasons for that, but part of it is revenue for them. They want people in a subscription, so it's consistent, monthly, ongoing, for forever revenue. And there will be some benefits for us. One benefit would be that your mailbox size will be much larger. Many of you reach out to me when your mailbox gets to that size. And we keep our mailboxes to a certain size limit so that we can properly back that information up and restore it if we needed to in a timely fashion. When you get to Office 365, they're very generous with their mailbox sizes. Anyway, so there will be some benefits. Unfortunately, it will be a larger cost. It's a pretty significant price increase, so that's something that will probably be in my budget request. And I think it's something that we will probably try to start in 2024 and then continue into 2025. There will be a fair amount of legwork that goes along with getting things transitioned and moved over and getting everything in place. So, a little bit of bad news from my perspective in that there is a little bit of additional business value to us, but there is a significant cost that comes along with that. And then the last thing, kind of ending here with a little bit of bad news on a few things. Our ShoreTel phone system, which has been in place for ten years or so, great phone system, I love it. I've implemented it in past work environments and love the phone system. Our users love it. Unfortunately, that phone system was purchased by another company. The other company has decided to end of life that product, so we really don't have a choice but to completely go to a completely different phone system. It's going to be a heavy lift for us. It's going to have a pretty significant cost that comes with it, and it's going to be, you know, training and whatnot for county employees. So, there's a lot of solutions out there, no surprise. Many of them are kind of a monthly service hosted type of solution. Again, they like the consistent revenue, so the negative aspect of that is it is additional cost for us. A few years ago, Carol had asked me about the phone system, and we had some ARPA funding available to do something big. At that point, it was not announced that ShoreTel was going to have an end-of-life date, and so the timing really didn't work out to use some of that funding for a phone system, but it's still something that's going to have to happen within the next several years. And then, last item here, as you know, the city and county have a joint public safety center going up where the new 911 center will be. For the most part, that's a city project as far as, you know, hands-on getting involved with that location out there. I did take a tour of it yesterday. It's very muddy. Thank goodness, it was a little bit frozen. But anyways, the building is coming along, very nice, fantastic facility. Our biggest role out there will be mostly supporting the 911 center. They're pretty good at supporting themselves, but we'll help them as they request and as they need. We'll work with the city of Sioux Falls to get connectivity out there for all the technology that Metro will need, and then we'll have the ability to kind of have a disaster recovery location out at that location. Currently, that's at Fire Headquarters. It's pretty small and not a fantastic disaster recovery site. This will be a fantastic facility where we'll be able to replicate all of our data and have the ability to bring up services and applications and do payroll if we were in a bad situation with our facility downtown. And next, just a couple of screenshots. So, many of you commissioners have seen this several times over the years. I'm hoping that this is the last year that I show this, but I just want to give you an idea of what those older AS400 applications look like. When I started here, give or take twelve years ago, we had a lot of applications that looked like this, and most applications at the county in my time here have been replaced, most, almost all, with either a purchased application or a application that we've developed like this one that I'm showing here. As you can imagine, these more modern applications are more user-friendly. When we have younger workforce come in and they're looking for F-function keys, they're not even quite sure where those are at. These Windows applications, whether we develop them or purchase them, are a lot more user-friendly and have a lot more functionality. And then I also wanted to include what our county dashboard looks like. This is just our easy way to publish icons out to county employees. So, I have permissions to all of these different applications. They all show up here. Typical county employee might have a handful of county-developed applications, but these are all the various different applications that we've created because there wasn't a good fit to purchase something, or, you know, maybe it was just a small application. Whatever the case may be, there's a lot of county applications that we've developed as well. So, as far as remaining AS400 applications, you know, rewinding back to when we started this transition, I always called it an evolution versus a migration because there are so many different applications that we had in the AS400. We knew it was going to take a lot of time, and it was something that we were going to have to both develop and purchase our way out of because the county, over the course of twenty, thirty years, developed a lot of those older AS400 applications, which were great for their time, but passed due to move on. Anyways, this is what we have left. The Register of Deeds, you know, if they were to go to a product similar to Document Pro or what have you, would replace pretty much all of these with something else. Equalization is, for the most part, they are moved off of the AS400. This year, we did kind of have to leverage the AS400 to migrate all of their values into Tyler Incode. We'll work to streamline that, whether that's something that we do ourselves or work with equalizations, ProVal software to create an interface. We'll find some sort of way to decouple from the AS400. And then, as I mentioned with Highway, they're going to a couple of different applications that will allow them to move away from the AS400 to Tyler Enterprise Asset Management. So, I spoke really fast, tried to get that in in my timeframe. I don't know if I did or not. Any questions you may have for me?
Questions? You have any more bad news you want to share with us about?
No, I do not.
Do you have any idea the order of magnitude of what the budget cost might be for Tyler and Office 365 and the phone?
Not that I want to share today. Gets pretty involved. I might be up here for another five or 10 minutes.
Okay, all right.
There's pretty significant costs, unfortunately.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just want to say I appreciate your approach with things like, I see the Register of Deeds issue is still on the list for potential change, but I appreciate your deference to the leader of that department as a business operational leader. I see IT as a support service. You're there to support, give options and whatnot, and I think that might be an area where there's just a lot of processes that are tangled into other processes, a lot of external customers, and so we have to be thoughtful if we change the process on somebody. And anyway, so I would be interested in what our new Register of Deeds comes up with. Do you anticipate those being on the horizon, that they might have a budget impact for the next year, or where do some of your conversations stand with her? And obviously, we'll talk with her directly, too.
Yeah, you know, I think they are in a good situation because they have some of those M&amp;P funds that they're able to utilize. So, if she's able to request the use of some of those funds for a project like this, I think it might give her the opportunity to move forward sooner rather than later. And yes, I agree, you know, IT trying to go into a department and telling that department how to run their business is kind of like pushing a rope. That really doesn't work. Those departments really need to be the leaders and, you know, lead those projects related to running their business with whatever software it may be.
Madam Chair, one other question, just we didn't touch on it all in your presentation, but I know just a modern kind of hot topic is anything to do with cybersecurity, or can you just give us the one-minute spiel on that and where we stand and what threats we face in the modern era? Are we a high-value target out there?
Well, you know, really, all governments are. You know, cyber criminals really like to pick on local governments, and we're well aware of that. So, we implement a lot of tools, technologies, processes in order to defend our network, and I don't want to get into any details in a public meeting, but we, I think, are sitting in a pretty good situation, and we will continue to work on our defenses to defend against the threats that are out there. But yes, all local governments are targets.
All right, anyone else? Anyone in the public that'd like to comment on any of this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item seventeen, which is a presentation on human resources. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. I'll try and keep with Monty's tradition of talking quickly. All right, so what I've outlined here for you in the presentation below, it's just a recap of the 2022 goals that we talked about last year, if you want to go down just a little bit further. You've seen me in front of you quite a bit over the past year, so I don't know that I'm going to be saying anything too surprising to you this morning, but our main focus, of course, like many organizations, have been on recruitment and retention. I'm going to go down a little bit further later and show you some slides, looking at some statistics on how we've done in that area, but I'm pleased to report overall that I think the actions that were approved by the commission over the past year have had a very positive effect for us. Other goals that we focused, of course, was on expanding our electronic processes for both orientation and onboarding as well as exit turnover processes. Happy to report that we've got a process in place that now makes that much easier for new employees who are coming onboard and has also improved the process for individuals that are leaving so that we can obtain information on why they're choosing to leave the county. Another project for us over the past year was reviewing our voluntary benefits program. Those are voluntary benefits that are chosen by employees and are completely employee-paid. And we did make a move in January to Hartford, which we feel is a more competitive product for our employees to choose from. And COVID-19 is still on the list. It will continue to be on the list for the future as we look at the end of the public health emergency and what kind of impact that's going to have to both our health plan as well as our employee group. So, the next slides that you're seeing actually come out of part of our annual review. Sometimes I've shared with you that we do an annual workforce review just to get a sense of any trends that we might be experiencing in length of service, turnover, recruitment. These are a few slides from our annual review for 2022 and where we're at at 2023. You can see here that the number of job postings has gone up quite a bit, and the number of applicants have gone down quite a bit. So, not, we would rather have the inverse of this, of course. The good news is we're still receiving applicants for positions. The 39 might seem, oh, that's very, very good, but you have to consider that a lot of the positions that we've been advertising over the past year are ones where we're going to need multiple candidates in order to fill them. For example, a correctional officer we may post and be hoping to fill five to 10 people with that. So, not exactly the trend that we were hoping for, but I'm hoping to see improvement in the upcoming year. For the new hires, of course, this goes hand in glove with the slide that you saw before that. The more recruitment we're doing, thankfully, we have been also hiring more staff. The alarming part of this, of course, is, you know, we're hiring 67% more people than we have in the past, and that's a lot to do with, of course, our turnover rates. On the next slide, here is where you've been at, and I know you've heard this from me over the past year a few different times. The chart goes back a few years, so you can see that we had about 13% turnover. What you don't see on this chart is our years previous to that, where we were closer to 11 or 12%. And 1% or 2% doesn't seem like a lot, but when you consider the cost of that 1% turnover, it's significant. So, we would rather see that go back down at least to that 13% level, if not closer to 11 or 10. The good news from here is, you might recall that 2021's turnover level at 18% was historic for us, and when we came to you to start talking to you about some of these issues in January, honestly, we were tracking closer to 30% for 2022. So, the fact that we were able to end the year at 18% is phenomenal in my perspective. So, that's the good news. A little more good news is if you can believe the turnover rates from January and February, I think we're still on trend to get that, those rates down lower. We're not near 13% yet, but we're trailing or we're tracking just a little bit below 18%. So, hopefully, this year, we'll see further improvement in that area. Workforce by years of service, I just threw this in because I always think this one's interesting to see where we've been and where we're at. This shouldn't be surprising either. Because of the turnover we've experienced over the last couple of years, 43% of our staff have been here for less than three years. So, hopefully, again, improvement to be seen in that area. So hopefully, again, improvement to be seen in that area. The next slide is our year-end summary that, again, was part of our own internal workforce review. These were the major things that were done on the recruitment and the retention side over the past year. So a blend of trying to make sure that we're advertising better, that we're hitting social media a little bit more quickly. We've implemented some methods for notifying our own staff of internal opportunities in the hopes that they'll share it with family and friends. On the retention side, again, I think some of those increases and changes approved by the commission have had a phenomenal impact because we are seeing our turnover rates decrease. That recruitment bonus for law enforcement positions, we're still continuing to analyze, but it looks like it's having some positive impact, which is good news as well. Looking forward, again, I don't anticipate that our focus on recruitment and retention is going to stop. I think that's still going to continue to be a focus for the upcoming year, so we're looking at what we can do to improve culture at the county as part of that, increase training, continuing to watch compensation and benefit trends. Moving outside of recruitment intention, I'm very excited to announce that the county is moving to a new employee assistance program effective April 1st. We're moving to ComPsych, which is a national organization, EAP program, and the benefit to our employees for that is that they're going to have access to a broader range, array of counselors. And a lot of those counselors will do phone visits or virtual visits and sometimes even chat. There's a 24/7 call line, so people can be sure that they can reach somebody at any point of the day or the weekend or nights. In addition, with ComPsych, our employees will have access to five free visits each year for themselves and their family members per issue. So right now, they've received five visits, but now it'll be per issue, which will greatly expand hopefully the services that are available to them. So we're really excited to announce that and look forward to seeing if that's the positive improvement we expect that it will be. Other projects, we're looking at a performance evaluation process, it's probably been about 10 years since we last looked at it, so a group of department heads are getting together to review that format and talk about if there's ways that we can improve both the format and how that's being conducted. And as I mentioned, COVID-19 will still be on our project list, but hopefully taking a bit of a backseat, fingers crossed.
Thank you. Questions for Carrie? I'd just like to say that I've had the pleasure of being Carrie's liaison for a number of years now. Her team does a remarkable job, and I know that I hear from a lot of elected officials and department heads how much they appreciate the support, all the work you guys have done in recruitment and retention, and I just, I just can't say enough about the professionalism of the group that you guys have, so thank you.
Thank you. I feel very fortunate to work with the great group of people I do, both in my office and outside. Thanks.
Alright. Is there anybody for public comment on that presentation? Anybody have anything? Alright, thank you, Carrie. Alright, that takes us to item 18, which is to consider a motion to approve a legal office assistant for the public defender's office.
Forgot I was up again, but I am going to turn this one over to Tracy Smith, who will explain her request for an LOA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. This is a request to have a part-time legal office assistant changed to a full-time legal office assistant position. It's a matter we brought before our advisory board at our last meeting. It is a legal office assistant position that was authorized back in May of 2020. Since 2020, we have refilled this position six different times, and out of that six times that we have filled this position, three of those times they have left due to daycare issues, the other times they have, the person has left because they have accepted a position outside the county, taking on a full-time position that they were granted. Like Carrie had said, one of our missions is looking for better ways to have people stay in the county longer and improve retention. Every time we fill this position, it takes more time out of our office for our legal office assistant to be retrained. This was a position that was only 20 hours a week with the cost of daycare in Sioux Falls. Each time the person is left and they fill out the exit questionnaire, they indicate that the cost of daycare in the community, it's just not worth it to stay in that position. With the costs in our office and efficiencies we've had increased over the last year, our legal office assistants spend a whole day preparing for magistrate court. We've had increased duties with the costs of e-filing or electronic filing and prepping for court, so it's really important that the legal office assistant in this role is trained as they take on more advanced duties. So in looking back at my long-range planned and predicting where we would be at for next year as we get ready to prepare for our budgets for 2024, it looked like I was anticipating in needing a full-time legal office assistant in 2024. If this position were authorized to be moved to a full-time position outside of our normal budget request, I would not ask for a additional full-time legal office assistant for 2024. I do believe that authorizing this full-time position would take care of that request. So I would not anticipate asking for another additional position. As the commission is aware, typically, at the end of the year, we do typically have some salary savings from turnover within the office. I do think that the additional cost for this position would be approximately $30,000. So hopefully, with turnover later in the year, given it's pretty early, I do think that we should have some salary savings to cover the additional cost for this request.
Thank you. Questions for Tracy?
Do you want to do?
Excuse me? Public comment? Yep. Is there anyone here for public comment on this item? If not, I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioner Karski.
Tracy, how often would you say in the last three years this position's been vacant, unable to be filled? Just an estimate.
I know since we've had this open, it's been open for a couple months. It takes probably three months to fill it every time it goes vacant.
Okay, so, and then you have to train, they get trained and then they leave?
Correct. They leave whenever a full-time position opens somewhere else in a private law office or another county.
Okay, okay. Tracy did bring this to our Public Defender's Advisory Board, and, you know, just looking at the justifications for it and the logic, it seems to make a lot of sense to me, and I'm in favor of converting this position to a full-time.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kipley?
Yeah, that conversation at our advisory group was just, it seemed pretty apparent that this was the right answer. If we had dialed back a year in time, I probably would have advised, let's try this part-time position, maybe that's all you need, but sometimes we can get penny-wise and pound foolish. I think this has turned out to be that the part-time just isn't what's sticking. I think just the last presentation we saw, I think we've got to sometimes get more strategic about recruitment and retention and recruiting and retaining into a position that will really stick. And I think just for the functions of your office and the type of staff that you're recruiting in, I think we're setting ourselves up for better success. Yes, it will cost a little bit more. Of course, and that's the other, the element of going from part-time to full-time, it's not necessarily the salary that costs, it's now you're, that's a benefit-eligible position, and that's where the real cost comes in. But I think we're transparent here about that this is going to cost a little bit more, but I think it, in the long run, it saves energy, morale, all of the above within your office and within Carrie and the HR office of having to go at this over and over again. So I think this is a warranted move.
Any other comments? Commissioner Karski?
Tag on to Commissioner Kipley. You know, you talk about cost-benefit, and I don't think this has been a benefit. I mean, we tried, as you said, but I think truly this has been a more of a cost thing than a benefit, just with the amount of time spent recruiting, the amount of time spent training, and just not being able to keep the position fully. We've tried it at a part-time, it obviously hasn't worked well, if at all. I mean, nothing that you've done, it's just the way the situation plays out. So the cost of trying to keep this position filled and all the stuff that goes with it just hasn't been worth the effort. So full-time makes sense.
Anything else? Commissioner Benniga?
Just a quick question, excuse me. Of the three that have left that were looking for, I guess, support for childcare costs, are any of those positions that are part-time available for online kind of activity and working from home?
During COVID, we tried to see about setting them up for working from home. It didn't work out well, just because, you know, answering phones, being able to help the attorneys, being available for court and answering questions. If we had to an emergency, we would make it work, but from our experience, it just doesn't work out well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval, Madam Chair?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to item 19, which is a briefing of the unaudited 2022 financial results and publication of the unaudited annual report. Susan Beeman, good morning.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Just have a few reports to run through with you today. There are a lot of numbers on them, so I won't go through them line by line, but if at any point you have questions on anything on the pages, please stop me and we can go through those. The first report you have, if you want to go down a little bit, is the annual report, the unaudited annual report that we are required by South Dakota Fed to publish by the end of the month. This is a format given to us by Department of Legislative Audit to publish. It does list all of our major funds. As you can tell, in total, we have in all of our funds just over $130 million in total revenue for the year, and our expenditures for all funds were just over $117 million with our total debt of just over $60 million. So I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions on any of this before we go on to the next slide. This will be put, published in our papers, as well as we'll put this on our external website as well. Okay, moving on to the second report. This is a analysis of our general fund. Since that's where most of our dollars are in, we thought it prudent to show you our budget to actual for that fund and give you some of those variances that happened during the year. You will see that our revenues are quite a bit over budget, and that is primarily due to a lot of one-time funding through federal grants, $16.6 million in funding. That is primarily ARPA funding as well as South Dakota Cares money for the rentals and utility assistance that we receive through the state. We also had our bank franchise revenue come in a little bit higher than budget, as well as we've been able to get us some additional interest income just due to the changing in the banking markets. As well as, on the expenditure side, you'll notice that we do have some savings on that as well. Again, some of that will come into carryovers that we'll be discussing at the budget hearing in two months or in two weeks. And then you'll notice the primary one that you'll see that a little bit larger is the human services, the 1.5 million in budget savings. That, again, is due to the one-time funding for South Dakota Cares and ARPA that's helping offset some of that. So I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions on this slide.
Commissioner Karski?
Susan, the telecommunications tax, is that the 911 funding, or is that something different?
I believe it's something different. I can get you those details and get you that information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Susan? Looks like you can move on, thank you.
And then just the last slide is just overall our cash flows, again, for the major funding, for the major funds. And you'll notice that we do, if you go to the last line, you know, we do have an adequate cash balance at this point. Within that money is...
Forty-five, Senate Bill 4, Senate Bill 51 and 53 are all signed, so there are still a few remaining to be signed. March 27th, I believe, is veto day, and then we'll be also looking out for what gets suggested and then adopted for the summer studies. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions for Tyler?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kipley?
Did, did we get, or maybe it's still impending, with these summer studies and task force, but, and maybe Commissioner Karski can help me with this too, but did we get officially that there is going to be a summer study related to public defenders and is that ringing a bell for you?
It's an issue of terminology, it's not a summer study directed by the Executive Committee of the Legislature, but there is a task force, I believe, maybe the right, is the right word.
Yeah, that's ringing a bell for me now. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Tyler? Alright, thank you very much. Any public comment on legislative issues? Alright, so now this takes us for the opportunity for public, any other public comment, general public comment? Anybody today?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Bruce Burkhart. I live at 24607 on 481 Avenue, right on the line of the proposed Navigator Pipeline.
Okay, Bruce, just a second, okay. First, I know some of you came in late, so if you're here for public comment, before you leave, if you could sign in to, okay. And normally, when there's an item on the agenda, we try to do public comment during that time, but I recognize that we switched items today because the first speaker wasn't here. So I'm going to go ahead and let you guys speak during the general public comment. Normally, we would try to do that when there's an item on the agenda during that time period.
Thank you, I appreciate that. First thing I'd like to say is thank you to Commissioner Blyenberg for supporting landowners. Real quickly, I'd just like to say, I'd like you to consider some of the options that you have for the proposed ordinances concerning setbacks and depth and preparedness of the emergency services concerning this pipeline. Now, on our farm, we have 4,000 head of hogs that would be within a quarter of a mile of this proposed pipeline. And just downhill from that, my son lives there and he has two kids there, and we have capacity for 500 head of cattle. And if there's a, if there's a problem, if there's an emergency with this pipeline, it would be catastrophic for our farming operation. And I just want to convey that. It would be an insurmountable financial loss, plus catastrophic for the family farm that we have with kids and grandkids and livestock on our farm. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that you have some options, that you... to your attention, that you have some options that you can enact to protect landowners concerning this project. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? So, Gary, you already had an opportunity to speak about the pipeline. If you have something else you'd like to speak about, that would be fine.
I want to speak to a comment made by one of the commissioners on the pipeline.
You're really pushing the limits here for me today. I'm letting other people speak, so I'll let you go ahead and speak. But in the, but you, you did have an opportunity.
But we don't get a chance to rebuttal after your discussion. And Commissioner Karski made the comment that over 60% of the farmers or the landowners have signed on to this pipeline, indicating in my mind that over half of the, oh, the majority of the people want this pipeline or are okay with it. That 60% of the people is a number that came from the pipeline itself. We don't know how they massage that number. That's their sales pitch. And not all of these 60% people are in favor of the pipeline. They are coerced into it. The pipeline comes out and offers them money and says, you either take it now, or we'll come back later and give you pennies on the dollar by taking it by eminent domain. We're not asking for an ordinance to restrict the pipelines. We're asking for some ordinance to help give us some options to fight back against these corporate giants. The second thing I'd like to say is I'm disappointed that Commissioner Kipley doesn't recuse himself. His family stands to gain financially from this pipeline, and I feel that is a conflict of interest. And I too would like to thank Commissioner Blainberg for standing up for her constituents. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here today for public comment? Morning.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Bicey. I live right close to the Minnesota line in Minnehaha County. I too would like to speak regarding this pipeline. And I want to take something directly out of your association handbook. And I quote, "As a form of government closest to the people, counties offer a unique perspective that makes them critical players in the decisions affecting their citizens. And as state and local governments evolve, counties will continue to play a prominent role." Considering this to be accurate, for the last several months, the people in Minnehaha County have spoken out about these proposed pipelines. There are rural families and land that will initially be affected if this line is approved to be built. It will disrupt their land, their lives, and their livelihoods. You all have heard all of this before, as others have spoken out about it. But keep in mind, you all have yards, homes, and businesses or jobs that aren't going to be physically disturbed, but may be at risk if any one of these lines leak or break or otherwise produce side effects that are harmful. The question is, if it were in your backyard, your business property, your home, would you want it there? Why are the rural people less important and their land and lives expendable for the sake of this line, which there is no proceed large enough to pay for the loss of one life, if not hundreds? And we all know that there have been losses regarding these lines. That's to include any wildlife, domestic animals, tillowed land, and grasslands. If you are the closest to the people, then you know how we feel. There are lines not far away that have spewed leaks resulting in people becoming very ill, polluting water and soil for years to come. Is that what South Dakota wants, or Minnehaha County wants? Think about Minnehaha County Falls, the aquifer that feeds Sioux Falls and the surrounding communities, your home, your children's schools. I appreciate the fact of being able to speak to you today. If you are the closest to the people as a form of government, then do as the people have stated and do not approve, recommend, or otherwise instill any pipeline through our land, county, or state that has seen failures in other states, and don't put our people at risk. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning?
Make a quick comment?
Sure.
Dennis Anderson, Valley Springs. And I would just like to comment, Mr. Karski commented about pipelines or pipelines, and that there's always going to be opposition to them. I think we have to realize that even our government realizes that standards for this type of pipeline are totally inadequate, and they are rewriting the rules. State of California has put the brakes on any building, building any pipelines now for CO2 until the new regs come out. I have read articles where Canada's kind of tapping the brakes on CO2 pipelines. And so, this is something new. And there has never been CO2 pipelines that are this long, built any place in the world, single, single trunk lines. And they are the most dangerous type of CO2 pipelines. So, we are concerned about our safety.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. That takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any Commissioner Liaison Reports today? Everybody starts thinking about what they've been doing here for the last couple of weeks. I'll go ahead and kick it off. We had the Sioux Empire Leadership Council met last week, and we're kind of refocusing that group. We're going to move it back to, to meet closer to quarterly. I've been meeting every other week, or every other month. And there's just a desire to kind of refocus as to what the purpose of that group is. In addition, the, the MacArthur SJC Implementation Team met last week and got updates on, on the different projects that we've received MacArthur grant money for. The MacArthur Conference is May 3rd through 5th in St. Louis of this year. And there will be a site visit here in June 19th. The folks from MacArthur might be available if you have any questions about how some of those programs are working. But we're in our last two years of the Safety and Justice Challenge. So, we're in, in more of a role where we're trying to see what might be able to be implemented more long-term. Anyone else? Commissioner Kipley?
Madam Chair, was able to go up to Baltic Firehouse for the monthly Fire Chiefs Association meeting. Definitely a good group of folks. We did have some conversation about concerns over CO2 pipelines and emergency preparedness. So, we're starting to talk about some of these volunteer fire departments don't have the best equipment and resources. And I think we will be in a position where we'll want to be asking Summit and Navigator and start having a discussion about can they help us with certain equipment? That would be on point to a CO2 response. So, just putting that on the record that we're, we're having those conversations, I especially think it's important to make sure our fire departments, all emergency responders have what they need, but especially volunteer. The last thing I want to do is to degrade the willingness and ability to, for people to have that type of civic engagement and get involved. So, it was a good turnout at the Baltic Firehouse with all the different volunteer departments there, and some good discussion on other issues where I think they've had a standing item about radios for like two years. So, radios was on the topic. And, but the good news is it's about implementation thereof. They've got the radios in hand, and some folks from Metro Communications are setting up some of the radios to be on the, the right encryption and things like that. So, it's good to know that that's coming to fruition, something that this body approved, I think, almost a year ago, the purchase of some of those. But I think that's the only report I've got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Takes us to non-commission, non-action commission discussion. Any items for non-action commission discussion? Okay. I entertain a motion to recess.
So, moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Why don't we see if I can find signed documents really fast, and we convene at 10:30 next door for exec. Thank you.